Thank you.
Just to wander around back there.
Are you ready? We're gonna have prayer, guys.
Yep.
Family father, we're thankful for this opportunity to have to be here at council meeting. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this community and pray that my spirit will guide us in our service and in things that are discussed this night that we might have a weakening of minds to be able to pinpoint the issues and be able to serve as best needed at this time. And we ask thy blessings and guidance with this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Well, it's really good to be here on these sunny days. It's cooler here than outside. So we
It's nice.
We have the 22nd day of May and we are doing to hold a regular town council meeting. We'd like to acknowledge the presence of our media, Channel 32, Corin McElkey, and Bill Free for the Capitol staff. Thank you. And we're grateful for it to be back on paper. All right, so we're going to call this meeting to order and look at the additions and adoption of agenda.
I have two, Mayor. I'd like to add up date on the road repairs.
Okay, that is something. Could you bring it up with the CIO report at that point?
Sure.
Okay.
Also, the recreation facilities on a user pay situation. I'd like to question some.
Okay, can we put it under questions?
Yes.
All right, so that's a user fee. All right. It's regarding the swimming pool?
All of our recreation facilities, all nine material. Please, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. With those two additions, just one slide one, if we can, I just need two, 30 seconds with this one. Okay, so the senator, can we put it under other business, 78, possibly?
Sounds good.
All right. With those additions, could we add up the agenda, please?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilor Trump? Thank you. Are you in favor? Thank you. All right, we have the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 8th, 2018. If you are satisfied with the content.
I made a motion for block minutes of May 8th, 2018.
Thank you. Question, comments? No? All in favor? Thank you very much. The bylaw and policy has, you could see in your packet, there is a property that needs to be going for a tax sale. A tax sale represents an effort by the town to recoup taxes for three years, and when that fails, there is a tax sale date that needs to be set. As you could see, administration asked for August 14th, am I correct?
Yes, it's still opening right now, but it sounds correct.
Okay, so August 14th?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have a good memory, thank you. So, and so council can decide if that's okay or not? It's as near as council that month?
If I could, Madam Mayor, I just want to point out a couple of things. We need some distinct things from council. We need to set the date, we need to set the reserve price, and then we need to set the terms of payment. And you'll see that in that required action. So we just need to make sure that in the motion for the property as listed on lot, block, and plan, that those three things, make sure they come through in the motion.
Okay, so the assessed value was $56,700 on a bed?
Fifty-eight thousand, six hundred.
Okay.
One thing, just particularly, this isn't something we deal with very much, so particularly for the new councilors, when we put this out for sale, we must do it at a, there must be a benchmark for the price. We don't just get to pick a price that covers the taxes and then too bad for the property owner. So we use assessment because it's quick and we have access to it quickly. If it doesn't, if there's no bidders at that price, then we may look at bringing in an appraiser to determine better market values and see if the price should change. But we'll start with this, and we are obligated after taking all of our costs to give the remainder to the former property owner so that they receive everything entitled out of the property. We don't, this is only the second one that I think in 10 years that we've seen come up. They're not frequent, thankfully, because they can be a bit messy. But those are the items we need from council today.
All right, so first of all, let's start to start, start with the date. It's August 14th, okay with you all? It's the day of council, so it's an easy date.
Sure.
All right, so that's fine. Now, the price of $58,000 on a bed, is that something that you feel is a fair representation of a property as per assessed value?
Question is, have we spoke to Morgan to see if there's any movement on that, our assessor?
It hasn't been my intention at this stage to try and drive the price down at all because it may be a reasonable price. So I haven't tried to manipulate it anything than just what it's been assessed at.
The reason why I ask that, Jeff, is if we can, would that help the owner? He is looking at that situation, if we can move that.
Essentially, the owner had three years to deal with the issue. One, for three years, you neglect your taxes, really, you know what the outcome is.
The owner doesn't seem very concerned about this property.
No. And we have had other properties that have been close to being for sale, and people have made arrangement with a bank or with a lender of some sort to help them keep their property and pay their taxes, their overdue taxes.
Just a little bit of real estate understanding on this. Assessed values and market values sometimes can be close, sometimes cannot. But we're in a market right now where lots are not selling. Lot values and assessed values are not necessarily what it says there, because there's a lot of lots out there for sale and there's not very many selling and there's not many housing stars right now.
Uh, just wanted to say
And then that price, it all depends on the location, too. You know, so it doesn't necessarily mean that that it's going to be that value.
Is there residential, commercial?
It's commercial.
Commercial property.
Yeah, and well, and that's even tougher, because right now, commercial lots have not been selling.
No.
I mean, I'll just, just to give you an example, I had a commercial lot. It was assessed at $80,000 bucks. Do you think I could get that? No. I sold it for $50,000 bucks. And I took a loss on it because it wasn't going to sell. Somebody came, maybe an operator, how long can I hold on to this before, you know, it keeps on coming down, right?
So essentially, I hear you, councilor, so essentially, the benchmark we have here as an assessed value might be a proper place to start.
Well, this is a good starting place. I'm not, don't think that I'm saying that I'm saying, but if it goes up for auction, that's the key. You don't necessarily, may not get that price.
And you know, we always try, with the past example that we had in town, we always try to get the best value we can for the property
Yes, oh, absolutely.
To allow the owner to get the most out of his property.
So, just, to help me understand, let's say we sell this property for $40,000, the town takes back the three years
Correct.
Of arrears in taxes and then
And we give the rest.
The balance goes to the owner. Technically, how it works, not to get married in the details, we take back the taxes and any costs, so my time, and if we have to bring in an appraiser, and then they apply for the difference, so, because we have to register this with the problems, and then they apply for the difference and we give it back.
Is that all right? So are we okay with the assessed value? All right, and the third element that you wanted
It was just the terms of payment, cash credit. We, just standard boilerplate stuff, we just have to have it in the motion. We have to outline in the motion that we're not going to take, we're not trading for horses or taking postdated checks.
Okay, it has to be a cash currency.
You know, we're just taking draft cash. Jill has it in the, in the motion there.
All right, so it has to be a cash
The method of payment, just what I'm, so that I understand, it's full payment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're not financing it.
It's not just payment here and here and there.
It's not a boundary, it's all upfront.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, Counselor
I'm, we need a motion on this.
Counselor Brown was trying to do that.
Oh, okay.
To get you to it.
Go for it.
I make a motion to set August 14th, 2018 as the tax sale date with the following terms, that the reserve bid will be set at $58,620 for Plan 4025JK Block 20, Lot 7PTN, that payment must be made by cash certified check, bank draft, or money order, and that GST will apply on land sold at the public auction.
That's correct. Thank you very much. Questions? No? All in favor? Thank you very much. So that was really a big item of business. 78, the senator, do you want to give us the update, Councilor?
Yes, if you could take 30 seconds, check this over. This is the file. This is what's going in. I don't know if you sign it or Jeff has to sign it, but then if he signs it, it'll get sent down to the company.
I think Jeff will sign that.
And after a lot of work on Alex's part and a few other people and the mayor going through the French part of the equation, I think it looks good.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this will be in place, it will be in place before November the 11th.
Good job.
Thank you.
Did we say where this is going?
This is going
Same place.
The same place, and the old one, the previous one, the historical one will be out of the field of honor, the cemetery.
Which will be kind of nice. Thank you so much, Councilor. It's a, it's a, it's a nice, nice completion of a project that you have very much at heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counselor Van Groot just asked me what happened to 78 that was in your, on your agenda. Counselor Brown had brought this one forward and had asked it to be removed. So it's removed at this point, okay? Under
Until further notice, or?
Yep.
Yeah, in fact, it's a, it was interesting question that myself. Okay, the financial report, that was done in this term. The committees under nine, there were different committees that were there for different meetings that you had the chance to assess to. Is there anything in particular that you feel you need to discuss? Counselor Brown, in yours, there is a meeting that you're talking about, but you have, the date is 2017, it's just
Oh, it's 18, yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
Just a detail.
Yeah.
Okay, so, any questions?
I just, I'd like to pull up, pull up that this year's, uh, Friday breakfast will be on Saturday, June 2nd.
Okay, so in the past, we as councilor went, and I remember Counselor Creed and I, we flipped quite a few pantries. This year, it appears through your report that they now need to have two certified food handlers.
Yes.
And so we no longer will be part of the food handling, or what is it?
You can do it, but they have to be present.
Okay, all right. Okay, so does that need manpower? That's a question.
Yes. We could use manpower all the time.
Okay, what time?
Well
It's normally seven o'clock.
Time starts at eight, so you're gonna have to be there on seven o'clock.
Seven, seven, seven thirty.
Yeah, you were, you were the eighth maker, weren't you, one time?
Yeah, yeah, I was.
She's a server and everything.
You put sausages.
Fantastic job, they missed her last year.
Well, because I didn't know that we were invited at the same level, so I didn't want to impose myself. Okay, I shall be there.
So when is it?
I have a
Give me a day.
Saturday, June 2nd breakfast.
It's okay.
And Friday night
Tuesday.
June the 2nd day? I'll be flipping pancakes. I'll be, I'll be, I'll try to be there, but I can't be in Congress.
Yeah, June 2nd.
I have used days. So, I have used days, so I won't be there.
All right, it's okay. I'll be there in the morning to help him a little bit.
Thank you.
I can't stay the whole time because I have other commitments, but I'll be there.
You might get an air cleaner, right? In a helicopter.
I had that. Okay, thank you. Now, if you don't have any other questions?
I have a, I want to give a verbal report on my conference.
Yeah.
I don't have it in here because I was
Can you highlight one or two points?
You bet. As I phoned Jeff and told him that basically, the library, the library manager asked me specifically to attend certain workshops on her behalf, because she felt that they would be most beneficial, so I did. I attended just about every one she asked me to do. And so I decided that, you know, rather than me just give her a report, I talked to the presenters and I committed them to send us PowerPoint of each one of them. So I've gotten one back and they're supposed to send the rest of them to Chinook, and then they're going to be accessible. And so Donna's gone away, and I'm not sure when she's going to be back, but as soon as she gets back, I'm going to give them all to her. And, and it was a, it was a very valuable conference. It was very, very good, I really enjoyed it. And as a bonus, on the way out of the park, I got to see my first live gray wolf. Coming walking up along the road, right towards me, like heel in the park, and, and I, first I thought, is that a, no, that's not a, that's a gray wolf. It was big and beautiful.
Good.
It was really neat, and it was a great mumpers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go to the CIO report. Jeff, is there anything inside there that you want to talk regarding the pothole?
Ooh, there's lots of them.
That Counselor Van Groot is mentioning. I have called Jeff and spoken to Jeff regarding certain areas that I have noticed have really halted, are starting to be as low as the bed of the road. And those will be taken care of. If there are some in your neighborhood that are in such bad condition that need attention pretty well immediately now that the bed is drying properly, the problem is, it's no sense to add asphalt on wet, on wet ground. It does not do anything, it doesn't stick, it's road within 48 hours. So, Counselor Van Groot, go ahead.
My question, Jeff, is, is it feasible for us to do pothole filling in areas that are huge? I mean, we're talking 100 foot by 20 feet wide, 25 feet wide. Is it not better for us to skin the road, you know, chip it, take the surface off and put a whole new surface on it?
Are you thinking on the front of the junior high?
Well, I'm thinking
Or the elementary school, 107.
Yeah.
It looks like somebody came in and tarred that and then put down some gravel. Is that, is that a new technique that we're doing? Yeah, we tried these guys out, Patch Pro, I believe they're called.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they were trying out some areas with a different application to see how that plays out, so time to tell. It just kind of It started to washboard, wasn't it? Yeah. I wasn't sure if that's kind of just I know, I was gonna ask Bart if, do we go back and roll it, or what happens there? Because I just don't know, I don't know.
And it's the same, a thing, if you know where we had done some repair, going down the hill, the west hill, when you go down from the high school, there was a patch that was disintegrating. Well, it's back at the same
Well, the Patch Pro did their thing with that on there, too.
Yeah, but it's starting to
Is there a guarantee on that, or is there a I'm gonna have to see, I just don't know.
Those were tried, they were tried different techniques.
Yeah, no, it's Mayor, that's called the
School of Visionary
Powerhouse. To Counselor Van Groot's question, not to, not to defer, I just, I don't know without getting some costs on the milling and the repaving. I get where you're coming from completely. You look at 7th West in front of Redford's and, and around there, that's, that half that road's in rough shape all the way down.
Yeah.
Good, now, the county has a chipping, a rolling
Milling machine?
Unit. And it doesn't look like they use it very much, and I'm wondering if we could work on something like that after we establish the
Well, you know what, I really think administration would be
Yeah, I can ask Brandon.
The one that can
The only thing with that is then we don't, we don't expect that till the late fall, right? Because we bring in the payers once a year when everything's ready. So we gotta do something with it in the meantime. You know, you gotta get it passable and safe in the meantime, because we certainly wouldn't repave until, I don't remember, we got the tender this year, but
We need a little bit of warm weather
They won't come in till September.
Yeah. But if we, if we chipped it off, you've only got, what, a two inch lift or a three inch lift, and that'd be a heck of a lot better than a seven inch hole.
But right now, we are talking sales hole.
Yeah, I'll just have to ask for, Brandon, I'm just not prepared to know costs and what that looks like.
And maybe if you want to share with council regarding the mosquito control, the larva side, a little bit?
Sure.
We're starting
Yeah, so we've been larvicideing for some time, and so we'll just monitor those cycles. Last year, we didn't fog at all. Seems, feels a little wetter this year, feels like it's gonna be a wetter year. So we just monitor, Jason, Janisco's really good about saying, hey, you know, we missed this cycle larvicideing, we're gonna see a hatch, we're gonna experience this, so we'll just watch it as we go. We've got a good machine where we need it. The, what's the word I want here? The temperature, if you will, the appetite for fogging is even changing in southern Alberta. So you've, take Raymond, for example, now, who will only do it once they've trapped and identified the mosquitoes that can carry the west now. So they do not do it for nuisance anymore. That's over. And you're starting to see that changing, where before, everybody just did it all the time, McGrath still does it once a week whether they need it or not. But most communities now are saying, unless we have a bona fide reason to do it, we're not gonna do it for nuisance. No, we're not at that point, we don't have anything by policy at this point. But larvicideing goes on and has proven to be quite effective. It's all we did last year.
Jeff, if that is the case, if we do application for a specific mosquito, are we going to have those traps set up in the community to identify that?
So we haven't done that yet, we haven't worried about identifying certain breeds of mosquito at this point in time, but yes, we have to get appropriate traps and whatnot.
Yeah, because I was thinking, if that is the case, we need those things.
So we'll watch it.
Is there anything else in the CIO report? Counselor Brown? Counselor Trump?
Hold, I did have one question. On the landscaping at the pool, are they gonna be putting sod down or are they gonna just seed it?
I don't know, I assumed it was sod.
It's sod.
Yeah.
Have they started it?
He said in the next week, they were getting a truckload of sod that was
Okay, the nose of nice black soil.
But they're putting it, they're putting the sod down, he said, so that it doesn't, the dirt doesn't blow into the pool, right?
Yeah.
So that's what Doug said.
Can you give us a sense, are we going to have an opening, kind of, oublah, or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, that's not what I would have called it, but yeah.
Oublah.
I'd have to check that tomorrow with Doug. I assume there's a ribbon cutting for the purposes of the grant and making it more feel warm and fuzzy, so
Well, I was wondering, if we could have an official there from the government or whatever?
I don't know with that Canada 150, they gave out so many of those, they've never given indication that they were gonna send someone, just because they gave out thousands of those grants. So I think your probability of that's relatively low, but I'll check on that and see.
The other question, on the water, the county's application for the water thing, how's that moving along?
Well, that's done. I had misinformed you when I was asked last week if they had applied, and I didn't recall it, and I talked to Murray, he's like, yeah, remember?
Yeah.
And then I, of course, yeah, it all came to me, and we'd had that discussion last fall. So, yeah, they're, they're moving ahead based on that.
Okay.
Murray and I talked today again about it, in fact, we talked last week over dinner quite a bit about it, and we're meeting in the next little bit to discuss some of the finer points of that agreement. We do need to look at that agreement very close when we do the negotiations.
Right.
That is one of the pieces that's gotta be re-looked at, there's just some pieces that aren't good. They're not, it's not that they're not working, we're just, they're maybe unnecessary, they're not working well. We need to just tweak it a little bit, tidy it up, so we've had some discussion recently about that.
Okay. Thank you.
And their last item is regarding your barbecue for your public works. Does that need, does that need help? Do they need some help?
Bart and I, we're gonna go down and, and do some grilling, and everything else is being bought, so
Okay.
We're in pretty good shape, next Thursday, we're gonna do that for all the guys at the reunion center.
Next Thursday?
Yeah, so it'll be electrical, water, and public works.
Is that what you're doing on that?
21st, that feels like? Yeah, it's the 31st. Yeah.
Would you like some pies?
If you want to make some pies, the guys are not gonna turn them down, I'll tell you that.
Is this the, that we're invited to, or no?
If you want to stop in, yeah, we were, we were just planning on being, but it wouldn't hurt at all if you want to stop in and say hi.
How many, how many people?
Yeah, we're up to 15 there.
15, okay.
You don't need help, Bart McCrory, either?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Bart and I'll
I don't need to be there, I won't be there.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not asking for council to be there, if you feel like you want to take a drive by and say hello.
I think it's a nice thing for you to have, I won't be able to be there, but
It's just fine.
I'll be happy to bring you some pies.
All right, I'll let Bart know.
All right. Let's move on. 11, correspondence. South Bruin
What's the nine C, the strategic priorities, where are we not gonna go?
Well, you have, you have them there, Counselor.
So we're not
It's all inside there, if you notice, what's in red, it's what's new and what's still need to be moving forward, but there was no need for council direction, so therefore, we could move on. The peace officers report has been added, added to your package. We had a busy peace officer this past month, and as you can see, there are some, some heavy charges that have been, that have been put there because people don't seem to understand it's important to follow the law. Anyways, maybe in time.
The, I guess the one concern I had on the reports was the, was the number of times that he's been at the school and give warnings for people who don't have their children restrained. I think that the time for warnings has gone by, people know better, they should know better.
Okay, and let me, let me explain to you the way he kind of works, if you remember, we as councilor told him to be having an educational approach, and that his approach is, if after one warning, the same people are caught again, they are fined heavily, very heavily, and then never want to see him again. So that is the approach, if council feel that is a need of a change of approach, that will have to be for discussion
Yeah.
At another time.
I think that's a good approach, because I get constant complaints about the tickets that he gives out. I know there's only, there are like four to one warnings to tickets, so better to let them know first and then ticket them after.
Agreed. So essentially, we try to educate, but if you're a repeat offender, or if you have one serious offense, don't expect leniency because it's not going to be there. And this for the safety and security of the person and of those around them.
There was a question brought up on the Carson Discussion page, somebody was complaining at the intersection that somebody was turning, couldn't turn because of oncoming traffic, right? And, but the guy scooted around the right hand side and went, and they were ticked off, they got through, and they didn't. And they were wondering if that's legal at the Main Street intersection down, you know, at the insurance company there? I mean, I've seen people pull around there myself, and I just don't know whether that's illegal or legal, whether it can be done. So what's the
It's a stopped intersection, and you're, you're to proceed behind the other vehicle.
That's what it is.
Don't go around. What if you got somebody exiting that vehicle?
Well, yeah, I mean, going on the right of the person's never... Anyways.
It's not a two liner.
Go ahead.
Councillor Brown's got the same one?
Yes.
No, we just were looking at the total man hours and they all like, the only one I'm concerned with is the foot patrol for downtown. So in one month, we only spent one hour and 40 minutes walking up and down Main Street.
If I could do that, that doesn't include patrol time, just the time where he's issuing...
That's controlled.
I'm not sure why it says patrol time. So I'm not sure how he's logging it.
Okay, because I'm like, that's not gonna...
Yeah, no, he's done a ton of foot patrols down there in the month, so...
And if you noticed, when he's been there, he has been there with an RCMP officer. And so they have been there a little bit more visible, I would say, with the police, with the RCMP, and the RCMP is stepping up their games.
No, it was just a concern.
I want clarification on that piece too, because...
An hour and 40 minutes, what it's written down to me just feels like...
Agreed. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get that clarified in the next report.
Thank you.
All set, thank you for getting that. All right, let's go to correspondence. South Coast AGM, June the 14th, councillor Self is the alternate for that committee, he will be present, and Alex is coming for the EDA, okay? I think it will be a good meeting. 11B, Royal Canadian Mounted Police, Jeff has seen the actual report with the actual detail of the report, this will be presented at the ADOG Police Committee. I can assure you that the foot patrol has been really stepped up to the level that council was, desires to see. So that's a good one. The next one, 11C, it's a lame letter that I wish we never have had. It's from the Minister of Energy, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That does not answer a question nor requesting question for a meeting and a change in regulations and policies. They have not understood anything, which we realized that a long time ago, but that's okay. Jeff is still working with them and trying to get proper interaction with someone that will be more knowledgeable of, of the issue we have addressed. 11D, AUMA, just to tell us that there is a resolution that expired, that was the one on the education tax. We were interested to see the government collect their own tax without going through municipalities, but the government is not fighting. 11E, Southern Alberta Summer Games, that's an invitation for myself to go, but honestly, I don't think I can make it there. So if any of you want to go, so councillor Brown, you would be interested to represent the town?
I'm going with soccer, so...
You're going with soccer, so you will be part of our delegation. Thank you. I done it in Ledbridge, when I were in Ledbridge, I worked with...
Oh, I like doing something, perfect, okay. I just thought I was going, but whatever.
In general, you have your, every town is kind of marching in a parade, yeah.
Okay.
That's what, that's the way they had it when they did in Ledbridge.
Here's the town flag.
Yeah, I don't exactly remember what they had, but they had, they had something that identified us. 11F is Alberta Southwest Regional Alliance, they have their AGM. In general, whoever wants to go is invited, but I mean, for us, it makes sense if there's an alternate to send the alternate, to send somebody near there for tourism, that makes kind of sense.
Yeah, I'll be going to the base.
So of course you are, because it's your committee, the other person could well be... When, when is it?
It's on Wednesday, June the 6th, so it's two weeks from...
Yeah, I think councillor Self was possibly interested in going, but that today is coming back from Portugal, so we shall see.
Yeah, well, he can go with me if he wants to. And it's for spouses too.
Maybe you guess, yes.
Can I just clarify, have you registered, or do you want us to make sure you're registered?
I've told them that I'm gonna be going.
Okay, I'll just confirm with Bev that...
Yeah, just tell, just, yeah, I can't remember, I was so sick at the time, I can't remember if I did. I'm pretty sure I sent her a response that I'd be there, so, because she sent me, asked me again if I was going, but if you wouldn't mind, just to confirm.
And is Diane going with you?
Yeah, I, well, I'm hoping to, that's the plan.
I'll just confirm.
Yep.
All right. Alberta Environment and Parks, response to grant application, unfortunately, it's a negative response. Jeff has contacted a person that works on those grants and he has felt that there is a lot of very good information that gleaned through that conversation. There will be a resubmission for one of the projects. Their project about the twinning, the line, the sewer line is not doable under that grant, so we will deal with a de-watering station. That is what will be reapplied for, and we think we could get that one. All right? And as for that, it completes?
No, you missed one.
I missed one?
Yeah, are there any questions?
Oh, so sorry, use a fees, go ahead, go ahead. You wanted to know something, the use of fee, if you remember, we had discussed at council, and we had established, and we had talked about all those fees and had approved a schedule that was part of something we did in a fall. Right, we did that in a fall, that was pretty well at the beginning of this council. So councillor Benri, go ahead.
My wife and I drive around the community just about every night. It's been, I have it for 40 years. Sunday afternoon, we go past Redford Diamonds and there's a ball tournament going on. Sunday, Monday morning, we drive past, upon the hill, past the St. Ball Diamond, and there is garbage literally from Don Sudos right down to the next corner. And it's strewn all over the place, the birds have got into it, the dogs have got into it and everything else. There's garbage down over the hill. I want to know who pays for the cleanup of that, and is that involved in the, in the rental of the diamonds, or the fees according to the diamond?
Well, those are some questions for administration, I cannot have the answer.
Well, if it's on a Sunday, there won't be any rental, because we don't rent on Sundays.
You want me to talk to that? I don't know the tournament type, I'm just not aware. So two things that normally happen, one is we require a deposit from everyone that rents the diamonds for the weekend tournament, and so we have in the past not given that deposit back, because we've had excessive things to clean up. So I haven't asked or heard about this specific one, but we do take a deposit, I believe it's $200, and we, we have on a number of occasions kept it, because it's been above and beyond cleanliness or other issues during that time, so I'd have to do a little investigation into it.
Because I had one of the citizens up on that residence, up on that road, phone me up and say, hey, come take a drive, come have a look. And so I did, and I was not very happy.
All right, so administration will look into that.
Just for context, we have had in the past where they've done a good job of cleaning up, and we haven't picked it up that night, and the dogs have strewn it all over by morning. There's those kind of details too, where if it didn't get picked up in time and the animals got to it, and so I'll just have to check it out, I'm not aware of the tournament at all.
Then if, if, if we do it, is that involved in the deposit? Because that's a lot of extra work.
That's the idea of the deposits, that it's voice...
Well, is our deposit covering the cost?
Well, that's a good question.
Again, having a son is very involved in softball, if there was a game, if there was a tournament going on on Sunday, and it was a very unofficial one, they would not contact the town or anybody else, they'd have just been using the diamonds.
Well, you know, I mean, we cannot be there enforcing everything and use manpower to enforce on a Sunday, I mean, what are we, really, what are we using there?
All the diamonds get used on Sunday everywhere, people are on them all the time. We've had this discussion.
Honestly, you can't stop citizens of using facilities in this town. If they want to use them on, on Sunday outside, what do I do? Do I use a piece of it?
If they're citizens of our town, I agree, but if they're citizens of the surrounding area, I disagree with that. They need to be charged, I'm sorry.
Well, councillor...
And try to find losing charge to do that.
All right, councillor, you have brought some interesting points, let's have administration look into it, okay? Would that be all right? Thank you. Okay, so that brings our meeting to a close.
Is this a request for decision, go in camera, do you have to? Yes, you have one in camera, all right.
So our regular meeting is coming to a close, we've made it close, you know?
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Well, we have to move to adjourn.
Move to...
Move to go in camera.
Yeah, because if you adjourn, we can't...
Well, that's not a bad idea.
In favor? Thank you very much, thank you to the media, thank you very much. The reason we're going camera is regarding your land purchase.